Guys, for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
All right, quorum being present, we'll move on to public participation this evening. Item A is public comments. Any member of the public is welcome to speak at this time. Please come down to the podium and provide your name and address to the clerk and address the board.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Stephen Scott Eves. For the record, 678 South Hale Street, Plano, Illinois. My reason for my visit, I wanted to introduce myself to you, the Village of Montgomery. I'm running for sheriff of Kennel County. I've been the chief of police in Plano for 25 years. I've worked there as a police officer for 28. I was also an officer in Batavia. I'm kind of a relative of this area. I was born and raised just off of Ashland Avenue. Spent a lot of time at Gary O's and at some of the parks playing ball. So, I have to say, this is a beautiful facility. It really is awesome. I'm running on basically three real short goals. I want to improve police relations between the deputies and the city police by some shared shift changes and strategies. I want to implement community policing with a team with some fact goals that we're going to fix, problems our regular officers can't always get to. And I want to make sure we have equality in our patrol zones. Besides that, I basically want to let you know I'm going to be in some of your neighborhoods this summer, later on this summer, and I just felt it was important to me to make sure the city fathers and the mayor knew that it was this is me who's out there. So, if I may, Mayor, permission to leave my cars up here?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other member of the public that wishes to address the board this evening? Hearing no, we'll move on to item B, which is Charles Richardson, if he's here this evening. 1017 Wellman Avenue, requesting permission to grow vegetables on village property. The podium is yours.
Good evening, board members and citizens of Montgomery. My name is Charles Richardson, and I am a citizen within the community of the Village of Montgomery. Recently, I met and had several discussions with Stan Bond, a village trustee, regarding the utilization of vacant land parcels located in Montgomery. I have experience and education with organic growing techniques. If the village board members can agree to a contractual agreement with me, then the citizens of Montgomery, the village of Montgomery, and myself would all benefit from my efforts. Assistant village administrator Jamie L. Ludovic and I have had several discussions involving what would be needed for this project. I have two ideas of how the land could be utilized. Garden plots. My first plan would be to divide plots into community gardens. Here's an example of how it would look this time of year. For those of you who are familiar with the Jericho Road Community Garden located west of Orchard Road in Aurora, this is a good example. Those plots could be rented out to individuals for personal use. Maintenance that would be required includes plowing, added soils, nutrients such as manure and compost. A good, dependable water source is essential. I would measure and divide out the garden plots. Fencing would also be necessary. Someone is also needed to assign and rent various plots. Now, as you see on the board here, this is not an actual, whoops, thank you, this is not an actual plot, but just an example of what one may look like from an aerial view. You have approximately 100 plots, as you see, measured 20 foot by 30 foot, and in between those plots are grassed areas where one could walk up and down and work the plots without damaging any of the vegetable and/or fruit plants. And as you see, it's a good adequate source of sunlight, and with added water, I see a tremendous opportunity. My role would be plowing the land, putting the nutrients into the soil. I would divide the land into plots like you see on this picture. And if anyone is wondering what that big wooden box is, that could hold compost which could go directly into the garden plots. Then I would assign plots to citizens so that they could grow a garden there and take a little pride in what they're doing, both for their own health and personal well-being. Is there any questions at this point in time, folks? Board members or citizens?
You know, if we have questions in the end, we'll raise those.
Okay. I'll answer them to the best of my ability, sir. My second idea would involve community-supported agriculture, or CSA. This is what a CSA is. Within a CSA, citizens buy shares of produce that is grown on the land throughout the year. The produce is grown in fields along with greenhouses. A fee is charged for each season, and the member receives a box of produce each week, similar to what you see in this picture. The money is then put back into the CSA business. The CSA that I have visited recently is called Heritage Prairie Farm, which is located west of Route 38 in Elburn. Depending on the land area, a CSA can have multiple events and uses. Jamie, if you would, could you click on the link, please?
I can. You know, Charles, just for the sake of time, we can provide these slides to our board members afterwards as well, and then they can check out the links.
Then just look, this looked good to me. Is anyone having strawberries and ice cream tonight? Especially organic? This is a website of the CSAs that are located all over the country, and for anyone's information, if you click on that link and put in Montgomery, Illinois, it'll bring up a whole host of lists of CSAs throughout this entire area. In closing, I would like to thank both Stan Bond and Jamie Ludovic for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Hearing no comment, what we'll do is we'll move on this evening. It's kind of a novel idea that I think staff would appreciate some more time to look into that kind of approach, but definitely appreciate residents coming up with ideas and community gardens, and it's been something that Stan's been talking about for years. So, definitely appreciate you coming tonight, and we'll definitely be in touch with you. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda this evening. I'll briefly read through items A through E and entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special board meeting of June 6th, the building report for May, the accounts payable through June 18th of $507,000 and change, the appointments to the revolving fund committee, and the resolution 2013-012, which is to revise our standing advisory committees. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Move on. Trustee Heinz, second by trustee Bond. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Matt Carey, 6-0. We'll move on to items for separate action. If it's okay with the board, we'll take these in groups of two. What you'll see is a recommendation from the planning commission, and then we'll have the ordinance after that. So, items A and B, I'll ask senior planner Chipman to report to the board on those.
Thank you, President Brawley. Before you this evening, you have three plan commission recommendations and ordinances. The first one is in regards to a special use for a gas station and convenience store for a Murphy USA. Now, this is proposed to be located just north of the existing Walmart, and then this is the Earth Mover Credit Union, Route 30, and Orchard Road. This is a quick site plan of the proposed location. A couple of things that the plan commission discussed was the access. First of all, this is a right-in-only, which is leading in off of 30 onto Horsemen, and then here are two full access points. Now, a couple of questions that the plan commission asked and discussed at their meeting was, why do the access roads that come off of Merlin not extend to this parcel? And this parcel, basically, the answer that staff provided was this parcel is not in the PUD that the other five parcels are in. And also, having five access points would probably be a little cumbersome for the site. However, if that is something that the board would like to see, we can work with the petitioner on that. In addition, also, due to this right-in, there is concern about traffic still coming out of the right-in and turning left. Now, currently, there's just a hashed area here that would signal to traffic that this is an illegal movement. So, the petitioner has been fantastic to work with. They have upgraded their building materials upon staff's request and have provided a nice site layout. Here are a few materials, if you'd like to pass these around. So, there are brick and some of the color palettes. And there's also a member, a representative of the petitioner, Mr. Rafael Bossi, here, if you have any questions for him. The one last item I'd like to bring up was, there was a little bit of concern from Earth Mover Credit Union in regards to the alignment of this access point. This alignment is, this is actually an old picture. The alignment has been pushed a little north on staff's request to line up with Earth Mover's access point. Now, to staff, we do our best to align access points, so there are fewer conflicts. Now, Earth Mover did cite a concern with this due to some cut-through traffic that they have experienced. So, the plan commission voted four to three to approve this, and the reason it was such a close vote was because of the access issues mainly on Horsemen here with the striped area. So, with that, I guess I would ask if there are any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
The concern is the northern entrance being a little too close to the right turn. Is it possible to move it a little bit further south to ease?
It's actually not the proximity to the north that was the concern. It was the, it being fairly wide and being just a right-in. They're worried that traffic will cross, take this left-hand movement to get into this lane rather than coming down to the south. Now, it is, staff looked at this intersection pretty closely, and we spoke with the petitioner in regards to it, and staff was initially in agreement that this was a wide right-in. However, once you see the truck-turning movement into the site from this access point, it was clear that the petitioner did need all 25 feet of that right-in. So, that is why that was taken off staff's comments.
I attended the plan commission meeting last Thursday, and chief, I'll, just as far as a police department perspective, a public safety perspective, it's safest if the intersections are lined up, correct? As opposed to having one pushed one, the Earth Mover Credit Union concerned?
No, that's correct.
Okay. And if Earth Mover Credit Union is concerned about vehicles coming through and driving through, the way that this plan sits right now, being separate from the plan use development to the west of it, I agree with the plan as it is now. If you add those two through the drivelanes going through those areas, that would just give the potential to have more traffic go through there. I think if you have it the way that it is, that it solves that problem. The only people cutting to go through to the gas station would be people going to get gas. So, that's my opinion.
Yeah, and I have experience on that in another world, and the cross-access is nice, but when you have a gas user next to, let's say, a restaurant wanted to go next door, the restaurant doesn't really want gas vehicles and trucks and that cutting through. So, I agree with the plan, the way that it's shown today. And then with the Horsemen Trail regarding the curb, our engineering firm was okay with the current layout.
Yeah, it's acceptable. You know, people will violate right-in, right-out. If it becomes an accident problem, there's two solutions. One is to put a concrete barrier across the, you know, across Horsemen. That would be the physical way to stop it permanently. The other would be just to step up enforcement details there to make sure people are ticketed if they violate the law.
I'd like to see this project stay away from open cutting the road to put curb in at this point, if that's, another plan commission recommended that, but if we don't need the curb there, I think it's probably, there didn't, it says in here.
And the only other concern that I know the plan commission had was along Route 30, but we can't control that, and I think it was mentioned that there was only enough space for two or three vehicles there. When I drove home that night, there's space for at least eight or nine. So, there's plenty of space there.
You're correct. Just for the board's full knowledge, they were referring to this left-hand turn movement off of 30 onto Horsemen, and we did have the conversation as to how Route 30 is a state route, and it would have to be approved by the state, and currently, Route 30 is undergoing a, or the state is undergoing a phase-one engineering study on Route 30, and that's really where staff wants to bring those items up to the state.
Andrew Wells?
One other thing, I mean, when the initial improvements throughout 30 were done, you know, these uses, these land uses were contemplated, and that turn lane and the stacking on 30 is commensurate with those uses. So, I wouldn't think any expansion would be necessary at this time, but planner Chipman points out they are going to look at it for phase one. I think it'd be very difficult to enlarge it right now.
Excellent. Does the petitioner have anything to add to the discussion, or, sorry to put you on the spot, some people like to...
Good evening. My name is Rafael Bossi, and I'm with CEI Engineering. We are the civil engineers on the Murphy Project, and we've been working closely with village staff on the site plan in particular, and one of the major issues has been access. And the right-in, as planner Chipman said, was strictly for truck movements, and there's a program called Auto Turn that depicts the movements of different vehicles through a site and through intersections. That's how curb radii and shapes of intersections are designed. The other issue was the alignment of our southern access point with the Earth Mover Credit Union across the way. Certainly, their concerns would be exacerbated by connecting drive to the parcels to the west. In addition, if we were to extend a curb opening on the northwest side of our site, that would pretty much counteract what we're trying to do, is to avoid traffic exiting the site on the right-in. Illegal movements will be made, but at least this will preclude that, because the only people using our site will be people coming to get gas or to utilize the convenience store. And also, in, is a difference between our parcel and the others is they only have one point of access, which is the drive aisle to the south of the parcel. We have other points of ingress and egress, where it helps them to have essentially multiple points of ingress and egress because of their connection to the adjacent parcels. We don't necessarily need that, and connecting would, I think, would be a worse situation traffic-wise than what we have now. We have gone through a couple of review phases with village staff, and there's a few minor comments that we still are working to resolve, but I believe the engineers and the planners are in agreement that the solutions are there, and it's just a matter of minor revisions to a plan. And we certainly appreciate the board's attention tonight to our project, and we certainly appreciate the support that we've gotten so far since we came here initially in January. Thank you.
Thank you. And the building elevation shows $2.34 per gallon of gas.
Come on, I gotta have something good going on here so that you guys will vote for me.
Are there any other questions for the petitioner or discussion at this point?
Just a quick question, that Earth Movers, I think, were worried about it, because before Horsemen's Trail, Pete, if you remember, before we had it go that direction, everybody cut through, and I think that's what they were, that was what they're thinking could happen here. At the same time, up on north, we could also put these little yellow sticks in the ground, I imagine, that you see in North Aurora, which they had to do because people still came out of the right lane no matter what. And the same way with, you'll see it on, I think it's Terry and Edgeland, where they put it for the railroad tracks, because people went around them too, so they finally put them, and therefore, that would stop them from coming out and going left from the right-hand turn. So, I think it'd be workable.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Jared. We'll tackle these one at a time. So, item A would be a recommendation of the plan commission. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Bond?
Second.
Second by trustee Spurling. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Matt Carey, 6-0. We'll move right into item B, which is ordinance 1570 granting a special use for Murphy USA. This is a waiver on the first and passage on the second. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Steve?
Second.
Second by Doug. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Matt Carey, 6-0.
Thanks, sir.
We'll move on to items C and D we'll tackle together. This is a recommendation of the plan commission on zoning text amendment for sections 3, 9, and 11. This is regarding adult-oriented uses, and I'll ask senior planner Chipman for his report on this.
Thank you, President Brawley. Before you this evening, we have a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance in regards to adult, excuse me, adult-oriented businesses. We looked at the definitions of adult-oriented uses and found that there was, that they needed updating. So, before you tonight, we're proposing not only to update the adult bookstore definition, but add adult entertainment facilities, and then update the adult theater definition. Now, before you tonight also is, this is a representation of what was shown to the plan commission, what the staff's recommendation was. There are several restrictions that go with adult-oriented uses typically, and we are proposing to expand upon those restrictions. First of all, currently, there is a 500-foot buffer around, or excuse me, 500-foot setback around residential parks, schools, churches, and other religious institutions. Now, that setback, staff has proposed to increase to 1,000 feet from 500, and the plan commission has actually recommended to increase that just a touch further to 1,100 feet. Also, there is a separation restriction, so two adult uses would not be able to be within 1,000 feet of one another, or, excuse, I believe it's 1,000 feet. And then also, staff proposed restricting this from a special use in the M1 and M2 districts to just a special use in the M2 district. So, you may ask, what does all this mean? It really boils down to a map similar to this, where you can see the increased setbacks from the certain uses. In addition, staff had also proposed a corridor setback, where you would not be able to place a adult-oriented business within 300 feet of a road corridor, of a road corridor for Orchard Road, Route 31, and Route 30. And this is now what the map looks like. There are two parcels down here and two parcels up here along Akut Road. This is south of Caterpillar. These would be the areas that adult-oriented businesses would be allowed as special uses. Yes, I see questions?
Is there a third tiny piece, or is that something?
There is a very small piece up there. I believe it is divided by a railroad spur, and then, so it made a very small parcel. With that, as I mentioned, the plan commission did want to increase the buffer to 1,100 feet, the setback. With that, I guess I would ask if there are any questions?
So, just to clarify, the map shown there is the plan commission's recommendation. So, with what was recommended, there would be those four parcel, five parcels, I guess, shown in purple, dark purple, that would, where the uses would be a special use.
Thank you, Jared. Trustee Bond, have something?
Is Akut Road on this map? Can you help identify that for me?
Absolutely. Akut Road is right here. Trustee Bond?
There's no setback from that?
There is not proposed a setback from Akut Road. The reason behind that is Akut Road, staff feels is more of an industrial road to begin with rather than a main thoroughfare through the community, especially one that connects residential with business.
Our signage ordinance currently would forbid an on-building sign that might face Orchard Road from that area? Would that be accurate?
No. Our sign ordinance would allow signs on pretty much every face of the building at this point in time, so, and that is not built into the recommendation.
Isn't there currently a building there? Is there currently?
There are no buildings on either one of these.
But in front of it, towards Orchard Road?
Right here, this is VVF?
Yeah, okay. So, you wouldn't see it, per se, from Orchard Road?
It would be difficult, especially under our current sign ordinance.
The plan commission's recommending, what is the distance between any adult-oriented facility? 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet? You've got to forgive me, my agenda's not coming up here.
That's all right, and I apologize. I believe, I have a few numbers in my head, and I'm trying to get that right.
It was 1,000? Thank you very much. It's currently 500. They want to increase it to 1,000.
Yes, thank you.
And Oswego has 1,760 feet.
That is correct.
If anything, I'd like to see it even bigger than the 1,100. If we can go even 1,500, I would like to see that as great as we can get it.
I apologize, from here to here?
Correct.
Well, I believe that trustee Youngerman's actually referring to the separation between uses.
If there was one location, the distance between another.
Oh, okay.
So, for instance, if one located here and another one would locate here, because if you locate in this corner, it would be difficult to locate another one on either one of those parcels.
Follow-on question. If we were to deliberate increasing the setback from the major corridors such as Orchard, would that be problematic? Was that discussed? A number greater than the number we're currently entertaining?
I apologize, if we were to table this?
If we were to increase the setback while retaining the rest of what's been brought to us, but it would be up to the board to deliberate, but I would favor a bigger setback from Orchard Road from our major corridors.
Absolutely, I'd...
Just the thing I'd urge you to do is not to eliminate it entirely. You can see where it's allowed. If you continue to expand the restriction further and further, you may end up with nothing, and nothing is not a great plan. Illinois law requires some element of use. We're keeping it pretty minimal, but the further you go, the less likely, you know, the more likely we could be challenged because we don't have an adequate space for the use.
Well, here's my concern, and help me if I'm off-base, but looking, let's say, to the, to the west of Orchard Road, where we have the white area now, it might be a very natural thing for us someday to decide that should be M2, and unless we have a different setback arrangement, we could very well be looking at adult store right there.
I suppose that that's a possibility. The other suggestion I would have is when you do decide to do that, or future boards do decide to do that, at that time, they could revisit the issue there to see if it's actually been problematic.
Currently increasing, it wouldn't affect either of these two parcels, correct?
Well, it depends on how much you increase it.
You have three parcels there. You've got the two rectangles and the long skinny thing that doesn't look like anything. So you actually have three potential locations.
Is that bottom one, is that not Sherrling's property? Is it Sherrling's property?
Yes.
What do you mean by bottom?
Bottom purple one right there.
Oh, okay.
It's way down on our other end, next to Oswego, basically.
So if I could jump right in real quick, I have, kind of want to frame this a little bit differently. The bookstores and movie theaters currently are allowed in M1 and M2, correct?
As special uses, correct.
Okay. But live entertainment is not allowed?
That is correct. There's no definition for live entertainment, and therefore, under our ordinance, if it doesn't exist on paper, it is prohibited.
So, and this is more for our attorney, is it possible for us to kind of break up this discussion into the ones that currently are allowed and restricted, the bookstore, bookstore, movie theater, separate that from the discussion on live entertainment?
Absolutely. What you could do, I guess the way to approach it is to say, let's talk first about where we want the existing uses, existing adult uses, which is bookstores and movie theaters. Where do we want those? Do we want, and what sort of separations? Do we want them in M1 and M2 like they currently are, or do we want them only in M2 with these sorts of buffers? That's kind of question number one. You can decide that. Then the second question is, do we expand that definition regardless of what you decide on, question number one? On question number two, do you expand that definition to now allow live entertainment as a third category of use? And I don't think voting on question one to say, we want to change this, that, or the other thing necessarily affects you on question number two. You can say, yes, we want to limit question number one, just M2, but we don't choose to add the definition at all.
So would we be in hot water if we just said, live entertainment is not something that we want, we don't want to add the definition and move forward?
You're in the same hot water, if you will, that you are now, which I think is not very hot. No pun intended. What it is, is the concern that the mayor's probably raising is, do we have to have a place for every type of use in the village? That's an area where legal scholars differ. Some will say, yes, we're non-home rule, therefore, we have to find a place somewhere in our ordinance for everything. Others, of which I fall into the other camp, will say no, as long as you've zoned your property pursuant to a comprehensive plan, and you've got an overall design for your community, it's reasonable to exclude some uses. And the way you have it right now is you've got some adult uses, but not all adult uses. And so I think that you're defensible. Will we ultimately win? Somebody'd have to sue us, we'd have to have a lawsuit to find out. But you've had this ordinance on the book for at least 20 years without challenge. So I'd say it's reasonable to continue if you decided to do it.
And somebody, if we approved that, we could get sued tomorrow as well.
You could.
I just look at this and think, the stores and the bookstores and theaters is kind of a different use. The live entertainment or live adult uses is not something that I, for one, would like to cast a vote on to allow in Montgomery, so I don't know what the board's thought is on that. Doug?
Well, one of the questions I had is this talks about adult bookstores, talks about theaters, it talks about live entertainment. It doesn't talk about, because my concern is the bookstore portion, because, you know, there are stores out there that are retail operations that really don't distribute literature. They distribute product, toys, adult toys. That's not specifically addressed here. It refers to them as bookstores. Those stores don't distribute literature. I mean, they don't, I don't think that there's magazines in those stores. So where do those fall? Is there a crack in this that those can slip through? That's my concern with the way this is worded now.
Certainly, and that may be the case. In my opinion, they would still fall under our definition of a, excuse me, adult bookstore. However, maybe the title of that definition needs to be amended as...
Bookstore merchandise heading.
Although, I would just respectfully suggest that I don't think it's a crack. If the use isn't described, our zoning ordinance excludes it. So if they can't, if what they're describing is markedly different from definition 1, 2, or 3, they can't have it.
And just a point of clarification, the planning commission did not discuss what President Broalik is proposing. So they just discussed sort of where to allow it in sort of an isolated context.
If you want to do what President Broalik suggests, you can do it tonight. I have planned for it, and I can explain the amendments to what you have in front of you to be able to do that. In other words, if you want to limit your changes to adult bookstore, adult movie theater, and remove them to only M2 and nothing else, you can do that tonight.
Which the end result would be to continue our ban on live entertainment.
Correct.
How does the board feel?
That's fine.
Which then opens us up potentially to legal issues.
No different than yesterday.
No different than today or yesterday. And like I said, in my opinion, you are in a defensible position. Like I said, are you in any hot water? Sure. There's always risk. Anytime you attempt to exclude something, there's risk. Is there substantial risk? I don't think so.
I just look at this and see, we're utilizing setbacks that's allowed by the law, but we're kind of tweaking the numbers, and we're looking at the maps to kind of limit the parcels that goes on when, I don't know if it's, if everybody agrees that it's not a desirable use, and I'd rather outright say it's something that we don't want in the village and move forward.
Well, I think we would all agree that it's something that we don't want in the village. I just don't want to open us up potentially, but that's fine.
You guys have any comments?
Do we need a motion to that effect, or?
You would need a motion to approve. If you'd like, I could explain the edits to what you have in front of you to accomplish what Mayor Broalik suggested. Does that make?
Yeah. Do you guys want to? I guess we should go through that before we go through the actual planning commission recommendation, because that's non-binding.
You could accept the planning commission recommendation without change. You're just accepting that they, in fact, gave you that.
You guys want to do that, and then we'll go into specifics. So that's a non-binding, basically, accepting there.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Lee.
Second.
Second by trustee Marisack. Take the role, please.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Okay. And that motion carries. So move on to D, which is the ordinance 1571. It sounds like, for lack of somebody speaking out against it, he'll go through and outline the changes to the ordinance that you see it that would put these restrictions on adult bookstores and theaters, and then not address thus continuing a ban on live entertainment.
So if that's what someone would like to do, the motion that they would make, and you can say, so moved after I say it, the motion you would make would be to approve the ordinance as stated in front of you with the following changes. In section 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2-12, subsection B would be deleted, and the word reserved inserted in lieu thereof. In section 2 and 1/2-13, definitions, we would delete in its entirety the definition adult entertainment facility. In section, Jared, the separation requirements, have they been amended in the version they have?
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Then in section 2, under the zoning code, section 3.02, which is the definitional section, again, we would delete the adult entertainment facility, and the remainder of the ordinance would remain in place. So if you would like to do that, you would say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the item? Hearing none, we'll take the role.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz.
And that carries 6-0. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And we'll move on to ENF we'll tackle together, which is the recommendation of the planning commission on a zoning text amendment regarding pawnbroker uses. Turn it over to senior planner Chipman.
All right. Thank you, President Broalik. The last item I have before you this evening is another text amendment in regards to pawnbrokers. So staff had several recommendations for the planning commission to consider, and the planning commission considered them and made a motion with a different recommendation than what was in the staff report, and that motion is as follows. Instead, currently, pawnbrokers are allowed as a retail use in the Mill District B1, B2, B3, and M1 districts. Now, the planning commission recommendation is that they be allowed as special uses in the B2, B3, and M1 districts. In addition to that, in the B2 district, the planning commission also recommended that a setback from, similar to the adult-oriented uses, you know, residential churches and other religious organizations, parks, and schools, that there'd be that setback of 500 feet away from those. And that is what we're trying to depict here. This is the setback, and as you can see, this only applies to the B2 district, not the B3 or the M1, because most of those parcels are quite a ways removed from residential districts. So as you can see here, it really focuses on this area. And then there's also a separation, similar, once again, to adult uses of 1,000 feet from one pawn shop to another, or one pawnbroker to another. And this, it's a little difficult to see, but if a pawnbroker locates on Douglas Road, as you could see, the 1,000-foot would knock out almost all of the parcels on the other side of Douglas Road. So with that, I would also just like to bring up a quick side note. On some of these planning commission reports, you have seen another name. We have this evening with us our planning volunteer, Jason Enberg, who has helped us substantially with research on these ordinance text amendments, as well as doing some, doing some site plan review for the Murphy USA site. So with that, I guess I would ask if there are any questions.
Any questions? Senior planner Chipman on this one?
What about the one we have now? The gold store is at 500 feet away from a church?
See, the gold store, we don't characterize as pawnbroker. And in addition, if we did, say we did, currently, there isn't a setback, so anything that is there prior to the enactment of this ordinance would be grandfathered in.
Chief, do you consider that somewhat a pawn?
Yes, not a pawnbroker, but a pawn shop. It fits the ordinance that we just passed.
If it fits within the criterion, which is a factual inquiry, it would be regulated by it. But planner Chipman is correct. It's there, so it's grandfathered.
Okay. So, no.
Any other questions? Trustee Bond?
A point of clarification for me. There's a term often referred to as consignment, where I might leave a quilt at a store or a piece of artwork. Would that be caught in this net as well?
And that is something that attorney Anderson and I discussed. For a while, I had expanded some definitions, so not only included definition for pawnbroker, but also for a number of other items. And one of the reasons why we asked the planning commission to actually remove those other definitions from their recommendation was so that we did not prohibit antique stores, consignment shops, et cetera, because some of those are uses that we see appropriate in some of these districts.
And I just want to add to what Jared had said. For those of you that don't know Jason, Jason, can you raise your hand? He's here tonight. He helped create these maps that really enhanced the discussion, the policy discussion that the planning commission had, and we're actually very lucky to have him working with planner Chipman. So I just wanted to point that out, that he's been a volunteer twice a week now and working a lot on GIS projects.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the first item here, which is the recommendation of the planning commission. That I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Stan.
Second.
Second by Lee. Take the role, please.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Unless there's any discussion, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance 1572, which is approving this ordinance.
So moved.
Second by Lee. Second by Heinz. Take the role, please.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. Thank you, Jared. Move on item G, which is a PSA with Tesco Associates for the Orchard Road TIF district that we've been talking about. This is an amount of 22,350, and I will ask Assistant Administrator Ludovic to summarize.
Thank you, President Broalik. As we've been talking about this item for a few weeks now, I believe at a previous meeting, the board accepted the preliminary eligibility report from the steering committee. This professional services agreement is for the next step of that project, which authorizes the preparation of the final TIF plan and program report, requires a more detailed study of the eligibility, finalizes the plan and program, and public review, and actually adoption of the TIF district. So this would be the process where, whereby the properties are officially selected, boundaries are established, as well as the joint review board is established and called together for the public hearings and sort of walks through that process. So we do have Con Savoy here tonight from Tesco Associates if the board has any questions about that. One more comment is, this is an extension of the request for proposals that we did because of the amount of work that had already been done on this project. So just wanted to clarify that, and would be happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Does this permanently finalize which properties are going to be in the TIF?
This process would, yes.
But this would be...
By voting for this, that does not...
No, correct.
It just begins the process. There's still discussion... It just begins the process. There's still discussion that is going to take place on whether or not certain properties are within or without, okay.
Correct.
And looking through their tasks, there's several, I want to say I saw at least five, maybe, workshops or public meetings that we would be discussing this, and we would have our consultant here as well, so. This is the first step in the process. Really, if we never did the feasibility study, this is where you would start.
So this is kind of like a comp plan process, a little bit, with the discussion of village residents and that kind of thing?
It isn't so much resident input as it is the members of the joint review board, so the various taxing districts. So residents are not, there is a resident member on the joint review board, however.
Okay.
Are there any questions this evening for Jamie or Con Savoy while he's here?
Con, do you have anything that you want to add?
Hearing none, I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with Tuscan Associates for the final TIF plan.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Spurling. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Marisack. Any discussion? Take the role, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
And that carries six oh. Thank you, Con, appreciate it. We'll move on to item H this evening. Award of a contract through the Kane County bid to perform traffic control systems, or two traffic control systems, limited, for pavement marking services in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand. And I will ask Director Povens for his summary of this item.
Thank you, President Brolli. Tonight in your package is a award of contract through Kane County. This is for pavement striping throughout the Village of Montgomery. I'm asking for not to exceed a award of twenty-two thousand dollars. That's our annual budgeted amount. So generally, our need will exceed that amount, so we work with Preform and their staff to work off a template we developed some years ago that identifies all the locations and the different colors and whistles of striping and symbols that need to be applied. And we'll work with them to identify those areas of greatest need. We'll also take advice and input from the Police Department, our public work staff. They sometimes know of areas that need to be changed. So fairly straightforward, this was bid through Kane County's bid process, so it has gone through a rigorous bidding and review and approval process. So again, tonight I'd ask for acceptance of the award to Preform Traffic Control, an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand.
Just for clarification purposes, this is work that will happen all throughout Montgomery, including Kendall County? Or does it just have to take place in Kane?
No, this is throughout, there are no county limits on this. It just happens to be bid through the Kane County process.
Okay.
And then I always mention this, is that, and I think you commented on that when I was chatting. This is a contract that was bid out competitively bid by the county, and we're accepting that bid, so it's not a no-bid contract.
That's correct, yes.
All right, are there any other comments on pavement striping? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract, twenty-two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Steve, second by Stan. Take the role, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
And the motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Move on to item I this evening, ordinance fifteen seventy-three, which is reducing the number of Class G liquor licenses, which was previously held by Applebee's. This is a waiver on the first and passage on the second reading, and I will ask Assistant Administrator Ludovic to summarize.
There's really no staff comments on this, other than we typically do reduce and only hold the number of liquor licenses for the number of businesses that have them. That way, each new business has to come before you, and you then have the control to decide if you want to authorize another liquor license. So with Applebee's closing, this is the standard process to reduce the number of liquor licenses.
Building in tone.
Have you confirmed with them that they closed last evening?
I will say I was there Saturday night, there was a lot of people there. A lot of people I knew, some of them from Boulder Hill, they think the location's fine. The staff was saying that there was thirty-three of them, and that sixteen, I think it was sixteen, was not bought by the new franchisee, and the other seventeen were. So it was really a bankruptcy, not just for Montgomery, but for Applebee's Illinois. But a lot of the people eating there loved the location. I think if something else moves in there, we'd be doing very well.
There are some comments out there that another business was closing, but he hit it right on the head, that this isn't a local problem to that location or that franchise, it was that entire restaurant chain, or at least in this area. So I know that our MEDC and staff has been very proactive in approaching, or at least trying to find somebody to move into that building, another restaurant, so. If there aren't any more comments on that, entertain a motion to approve ordinance fifteen seventy-three, reducing the number of Class G liquor licenses.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, take the role, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. That, we'll move on to item J this evening, ordinance fifteen seventy-four, which is authorizing the purchase of real property. The address is twenty thirteen North Main Street, which you can actually probably see is the building, the white building right up behind us here, so. The village was approached by the owner of that property probably a month ago. She'd indicated that she was going to sell, and asked if we were interested. So we, the board met an executive session and directed our attorney to negotiate a contract. So the idea in that meeting was that we own the parcel next to that, so we would end up owning two parcels that could then be bundled together and obviously sold off or developed in the future, so. I'm going to give a little synopsis on that. If any board member, our attorney, or staff has any other comment on that?
What's it going to cost to tear that down, approximately?
I don't think we've discussed that yet. We haven't discussed exactly what the use would be. Whether we would tear it down, we need to get in at first, really.
Okay. Would, if, is that livable?
It could be.
But only on the second floor, right? Because it's zone, zoned commercial first floor, residential second floor.
What's that, no?
The first floor.
Would MEDC use that as office in there?
We're not sure. Building Inspector Mike Kupar is in the process. Once we purchase the property and it closes, that he's going to go over there and do an evaluation to see what kind of shape the building is in, and provide a recommendation.
Okay.
And so the direction from the board, mistake me if I'm wrong, was that we were interested in the parcel, even if it was greenfield. So the building, if the building turns out to be usable, it would just be kind of gravy on the top. So we had a plan with it and haven't investigated the second portion of that. Any other comments on the...
The price, how did we arrive at the price?
You want me to address that? The property owner was approached by a third party with an offer of a hundred and five thousand dollars. We were given the opportunity to match that, and we were not required to exceed it, so we did, we matched it. There's been no independent evaluations of that price, and we didn't do an audit or an appraisal to verify it. But we believe it's consistent with the market, and it's also consistent with, it's less than what you paid for the corner piece several years back, so.
Was the offer through a real estate agent, or was not?
No, there's no real estate brokerage fees to be paid, no real estate agents involved.
The initial offer, though, that essentially set the stage for ours, yes.
Our, well, I mean, we don't have total control over all those facts, but our understanding was that an individual approached the owner directly without Realtor involvement.
So we have no copy of that offer, or?
I do not.
Okay.
I think the consensus, well, the consensus was, when we discussed it, that the prices that it was currently set at was worth purchasing for, kind of to control your destiny right next to your village hall and a nice parking lot that we have, so.
And the fact that we own the adjacent property.
Yeah, because independently, both of them are probably too small to house any redevelopment, perhaps, maybe, but together they might. Is there any other comments, questions for staff?
Two forty.
Do we need a simple majority?
Just simple majority.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance J this evening, which is fifteen seventy-four, authorizing the purchase of real property at two thirteen North Main Street. Moved by Trustee Heinz.
Second.
Second by Youngerman, take the role, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
No.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And Trustee Lee is...
And the motion carries four one. And we'll move on to item seven this evening, which is items for discussion. Item A is cell phone antennas on water towers. And this is for discussion purposes only, and I'll turn it over to Public Works Director Mike Povens.
Thank you, President Brolli. Actually, Planner Chipman and I have been working on this concurrently. The village was approached by a cell service provider with interest in putting towers on two sites. The first being the Police Department site on the west side of town, and the second being the Well Eight site on Wobansia Avenue. The Police Department is the image on the left, Well Eight, and then of course, the water tower there is the image on the right side. So in working with the carrier, they had brought up the idea of building what's called a monopole, which is a single cylindrical tower to mount antennas on. And after considering that idea, mainly on the Well Eight site initially, staff thought it was worth pursuing and at least discussing with the Plan Commission and the board as to our preference or lack of preference for such structures on our property. Right now, we have, I believe, four carriers?
It would be...
On Well Eight.
Two with two more interested.
Right, we have two, and then several police antennas around the Well Eight tower. There is some concern that over time, the loading on that tower due to the cell equipment, primarily the cables, starts to cause issues with the structural stability. We certainly never allow enough of it on there if we thought it was going to be a catastrophic failure. But we have seen situations with other similar types of towers where catwalks will start to sag. Cables oftentimes will block access points getting up and down. So we thought it was worthwhile bringing it to, again, the Plan Commission last week and you tonight to discuss, again, the possibility of pursuing monopole towers on both of these sites. The second site, the Police Department, and here we have an image, I'll let Jared explain the images in just a second. But initially, they had, were looking at the west side of that property, I believe, and we've since talked to them and would like to locate it on the east side, just east of the fenced parking lot. So it'd be between the parking lot and Griffin Drive, where Griffin Drive curves to the north. So Jared, would you like to comment on the mockups?
Certainly, thank you, Director Povens. The locations, as Director Povens was stating, is in this general vicinity for the police station, and then on the southern side of the site of Well Eight. So in regards to the drawings, as you may be aware, there's currently an existing tower out at the police station for police telecommunications. We believe that tower is approximately a hundred and fifty feet high. And then any monopole design would be between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and ninety feet in height for cell tower usage. And the ability, the, I guess the carrier who has approached us in regards to this would like a tower of a hundred and fifty feet. However, the village has asked them, what would a hundred and ninety-foot tower do? Because with a hundred and ninety-feet-high tower, we would be able to add additional tenants on there, so. And then this is a brief, an attempt at a depiction of what it may look like behind the water tower. However, you may find that this is a much better depiction. This is actually in Aurora on Indian Trail and Randall Road, where they have taken a lot of the cell tower antennas and put them on this tower. And as you can see, one of the carriers is located in the middle with room for additional carriers above.
So as Planner Chipman and Jared, the idea would, again, be to have future cell equipment on that if other carriers come in and want to put towers within the village, or provide services within the village. Currently, we would not require the two carriers that are on the Well Eight tower to move, but eventually, when we repaint that tower, it's already in our lease that they should carry the burden of any cost for removing equipment while we repaint. So at that time, if we were to build the monopole out at Well Eight, we would have them switch to the pole at that time. The proposal that the first carrier has brought to us in general is that they would pay for the construction of the monopole, and in exchange for no lease for a period of time, no lease fees for a period of time, they would turn the ownership of that pole over to the village. So we would own the structure, we would have one carrier on there who would be paying no cost to be on it, again, as they recoup their construction costs. That's a very general description of it. We've seen a draft lease, and they're actually revising one after the Plan Commission meeting, and going to resubmit it, we'll work with Attorney Anderson to review it. And certainly, that would come before the board for approval of such an agreement. But that's the general concept, is they come in, they put the money up front, they build it, turn over ownership to the village, and then for a period of time, they don't pay any lease fees. And at some point, they do start paying lease fees, so.
The location of the one on the police property?
Mm-hmm.
What it looked like, where you were pointing to, Jared, was the back of the property, but in the picture, it looks like it's at the front of the property. It's mostly due to the angle. This image here, it was actually a little too broad. We were afraid that you would be even less able to depict what it was. It would actually be located just outside the fence, out here.
I think you're standing, and that is you're standing on Griffin Drive, looking to the northwest generally, aren't you?
That's correct, about right here, trying to capture both portions of the property.
It would be several hundred feet away from rough thirty, then.
That is correct.
No.
Director Povens, what did the Plan Commission provide a recommendation on this?
I will summarize, they were generally in favor of it, they had some similar questions. We discussed that there will be, I'll borrow the pointer, ground facilities. That you can see on this, this is actually a ground facility for one of the carriers at Well Eight. So sometimes that's a small structure, other times it's basically a frame that they hang cabinets on. Again, then there'll be cabling that'll go to the monopole, you know, again, to go up to their antennas. So as part of our permit approval process in the past, we've always required some sort of screening or other, you know, something to mitigate the harshness of that equipment. But nonetheless, I mean, it is electrical and mechanical equipment there. So I think there's a variety of ways that we can do that, but...
And... We had somebody put one up on the tower before, and we got paid for that, they leased that from us?
They do, that's correct.
Why ain't we charging these guys a lease, even though they're going to turn that over to us? If something happens to that, who's going to fix it if the lease is turned over to, if it's turned over to us?
Well, again, the general idea, and we haven't signed any agreement or discussed any details, trustee, the general idea is that they put up all the money up front. We don't have anything in our budget to build this type of structure, et cetera. But the cell company would come in and build it, and then just give it to us, type of thing.
They should lease it from us, we should make something off of it.
Well, the opportunity to make something off of it comes from being able to sign leases with other carriers to go on there. I can tell you that the Wobansia site, the Well Eight site, is pretty popular. We've had a fair amount of inquiries, and we've got two carriers on there now, and two more that want to go on there. So if this monopole goes up, there's a good chance that we'd have one on there perhaps paying no lease, but we'd immediately get another one paying the standard lease fee.
In addition to that, and correct me if I'm mistaken on this, but the draft lease that we saw was only rent-free for a period of X number of years, until they recouped the cost of building the monopole. Then it would be, then we would charge them a fee. And I guess one last comment. I did inform the Plan Commission that I would pass this along. Several of the Plan Commissioners feel that there may be a way to provide better aesthetics for the tower. I understand that it's in more of an area that has similar towers, so staff has not done a lot of research on making the towers more aesthetic.
Excellent. Any other comments? Trustee Bond?
I like this thinking. Not only does it offer the potential to improve cellphone service for Montgomery residents, but be a revenue generator. And I think it gives us a chance to build relationships with some important telecommunications industry people as well. I have one off-the-wall idea to toss out, just to consider. Is there potential to tie a tornado siren in with some of these new towers as we look at potential areas where that would be beneficial? I have no idea if it is or not, but it's maybe worth thinking about.
I think we'd have to look at the coverage area. I believe the Police Department area is already adequately covered by siren. As far as east side, I don't recall. Another issue just off the top of my head would be interference with the cell service. I mean, we have to, it's part of the deal, is they need to be able to operate their cell service. So once a month, if we flip the switch and they lose... And I don't, I'm not, I don't know anything about sirens nor cell service, but that would certainly be something we'd have to check out, but we can include that as part of our review.
Might give us a free ride to some extent on our need to increase our...
It may open the door to similar types of structures further west, which I think is where we're having the majority of the concerns on siren coverage. No one's approached us about any properties out west yet, at the very west end of town, but certainly a possibility.
I like the idea of the aesthetics, if there's some way to get them to look less obtrusive.
They won't look like the pic, the sketch, that's for sure.
Well, I mean, I think of, I have a client that's in West Chicago, and the columns in the front of their building are actually, they look like tree bark. They look like, the name of the company is Aspen. So it's Aspen Tree Bark kind of simulated around the tree, and it would definitely make it look not quite as bad as that one in Aurora.
You can certainly look into that option. Again, we're at the very initial stages of an agreement, so everything's on the table right now.
Sounds like the general consensus is that, I like this, this is a true public-private partnership, where they front the money, build the pole, and turn it over to us in the end. That's kind of seems like a win-win for everybody, so. Sounds like the consensus is...
That's what we're looking for tonight, is there a general consensus that we should proceed with conversations with the carriers and eventually bring forward a proposed agreement for both the construction and ownership and leasing of the sites. Very good. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Is there any new or unfinished business this evening? Hearing none, future meetings, nice long list of places to be in the next month. And with that, we'll move on to Item 10, which is Executive Session to discuss the minutes of meetings for the purpose of approval by the body of the minutes as mandated by Section 206 pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 over 2, See 21. entertain a motion to go on Executive Sessions.
Still move.
Moved by Trustee Hines, second by Trustee Youngerman. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
One zero, Boston, end of first. One zero, Boston, end of first, period.
Call the meeting back to order. Item 11 is report on closed session minutes, and I'll ask Attorney Anderson for a report.
Thank you. As is the Board's obligation every six months to review the executive session minutes. They have done so, and based on my office's recommendation, we are recommending that you approve a motion releasing the October 22, 2012, collective bargaining matters and the November 14, 2012, review of executive session minutes, releasing those two sections only, all others being retained in executive session confidentiality for another six months.
Is there a motion?
Move to...
Moved by Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Second by Trustee Hines?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And that carries six zero. That, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Second.
Moved in second, take the roll.
Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?